Good evening, everyone. It's great to see a large crowd out here tonight. So thank you all for coming to the Bristol, Virginia City Council meeting. Today is May 28, 2024. If you will join me in a moment of silent prayer. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening. It's nice to see everyone here tonight. We'll move into the Mayor's Minute and Council comments. I just have a few comments I would like to share. First, I'd like to congratulate all of our 2024 Virginia High graduates. Really proud to see them and their graduation, so congratulations to them. Also, we have a couple of officers who have graduated from the Southwest Virginia Criminal Justice Training Academy on May 23rd, Rianne Hardman and Kian Simpson. So congratulations to them. They'll be joining the Bristol, Virginia Police Department. And then also, we're really excited to hear this week that we've been approved for a tobacco commission grant and for the Mendota Connector Trail. And I know Delegate Quinn's here tonight, and he serves on that board. And we want to thank you and Senator Pillion for your help with that. And then also to our staff, Ellen Tolton, who wrote the grant and worked consistently and worked on that for several rounds to get that. So thank you and Mr. Eads for your work on that. I'll open the floor for any comments from the council.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. We are almost to June the 1st. I'll make one more pitch for the In the Pines concert that will be taking place on June the 1st in downtown Bristol. There's a good lineup scheduled of some up-and-comers and some big stars, and most importantly, Dwight Yoakam. So please, if you have not got your tickets, please get your tickets. They're cheaper now than if you buy them at the gate. And please come out and support the birthplace of country music and downtown Bristol.
I would just like to add to all this. I'd like to echo the Mayor's comments about our graduates. We had 135 Virginia High graduates graduate this year. It's an exciting moment in their life. I know they worked hard to get there. They went through a lot. They went through a pandemic. They went through a bunch of craziness. So they worked hard to get there, so we should definitely congratulate them. And then also, kind of tagging along with that, last week, we had the Virginia High School Athletic Banquet where they recognized athletes from every sport across the whole school year, gave them numerous awards. It was a really cool thing to see. They also initiated a new award this year. If any of y'all have been to, have ever been to a Bearcat game, you've met Bearcat Brad, our biggest fan, our biggest sports fan. He was given the Bearcat Pride Award, the inaugural award. So kudos to him. He's always been, he's been a lifetime supporter of the Bearcats. So it was great to see him recognized in that way. Thank you.
All right. And I'll just add, thank you to everyone that came out for the Memorial Day Ceremony in Cameron Square Park. We had a great crowd, and it was so wonderful to see so many of our residents from both sides, Bristol, Tennessee and Bristol, Virginia, come to that. So thank you all who attended that. So we'll move into city manager comments.
Yes, Mayor, Council, thank you. Just a few quick updates. This Saturday, June 1st, we have the In the Pines concert that is being put on by the Bristol Country Music Museum. Tickets are still available online for $100. There's four artists at one day, one stage, with one incredible music experience. So I'd encourage anyone to go out and enjoy that music experience this weekend. A reminder that real estate taxes are due on June 5th, 2024. And also, there is a new survey for the Comprehensive Plan. Check out bristolforward.com to give your feedback for the new Comprehensive Plan.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're looking for an adoption of the agenda?
I would like to make a motion on the agenda that it be adopted with the following changes. First, I would like to postpone Item E1 to our June 11th meeting. And second, I would like to add a discussion item immediately following Item F5, add a discussion item in regards to Believe in Bristol.
Second?
All right. We have an adoption of the agenda by Mayor Osborne with the changes of postpone Item E to after, to postpone E1 until June 11th, 2024, and then add discussion item in regards to Believe in Bristol at F6. And we had a second by the Vice Mayor. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Nave.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move into the regular agenda. First on the agenda is Memorial Resolution in recognition of Kelly Miller. And Delegate Israel O'Quinn is here tonight to present this, and I will ask you to come forward for that.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Certainly be glad to be able to join you tonight for this occasion. I've said many times that one of the best parts of this job is not making laws or passing budgets or anything like that. It's being able to pay tribute to people who have had an impact on the communities in which we all live. And tonight, I'm honored to be able to pay tribute to Mr. Kelly Miller, a loyal and dedicated city employee here in the city of Bristol. As I was reading through the resolution after we filed it back during the General Assembly session, I looked at 30 years of city service, and that's a long time to do anything. You know, nowadays, people don't work jobs for 30 years. But he was certainly a steadfast and valuable member of the staff over those three decades of service. He was involved in so many projects that are, that have happened and are still ongoing here in the city. And I suspect it's one of those things that, you know, after, after each of you have retired and moved on to something else, there'll be city council members sitting right there in your chair saying, oh, yeah, Kelly Miller had something to do with that, you know, back in 2023 or whenever it was. And so for all the things that he was involved in, though, in reading about, hearing about his life, certainly, his love for his family, his community, his church was the thing that is, is the most telling about him as a person. And I know that certainly he's going to be fondly remembered by, by every one of each of those entities. And so during this year's General Assembly session, it was our honor to file House Joint Resolution Number 221. It was filed in the House and subsequently co-patroned by Senator Pillion, and it is in the honor and memory of Brian Kelly Miller. I won't read it. It's written very eloquently, far more eloquently than I could, could ever say, and is a fitting tribute to, to him and his service to the city. And so I know that he has at least one family member here tonight, and I would like to be able to, to present that to them at this time, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for that. Penny? His lovely wife Penny Miller's here tonight.
On behalf of the Commonwealth of Virginia, we want to present you with House Joint Resolution Number 221, celebrating the life of Kelly Miller. Wife, life well-lived and certainly very deserving, and we're honored to be able to do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right, next, we will move into the Historic Preservation Month, May 2024 Proclamation. Staff Report, Randy.
Counsel, the Historic Preservation Month is celebrated annually in May, and it's a time dedicated to recognizing and celebrating the rich tapestry of our cultural heritage. Throughout this month, communities across the globe come together to honor the historic buildings, recites, landmarks that shape our collective identity and tell the story of our past. It's a time to raise awareness about the importance of preserving these treasures for future generations, fostering a deeper appreciation for our shared history and the significance of maintaining connections to our roots. Historic Preservation Month serves as a reminder of the vital role that preservation efforts play in safeguarding our cultural legacy, promoting sustainable development, and enhancing the quality of life in our communities.
All right, thank you. And so the reading of the proclamation, Historic Preservation Month, May 2024 Proclamation, whereas the rich tapestry of our history is woven with the threads of countless stories, struggles, triumphs, and innovations, and whereas the preservation of our nation's historic sites, structures, and landscapes is essential for understanding our collective heritage and fostering a sense of identity, pride, and continu- continuity for its future generations, and whereas Historic Preservation Month provides an opportunity to celebrate and recognize the efforts of individuals, organizations, and communities dedicated to safeguarding our cultural legacy, and whereas through the preservation of historic sites, landmarks, we honor the diverse voices and experiences that have shaped our communities, acknowledging both the achievements and the challenges of the past. Whereas the conservation of historic resources not only enhances the quality of life for the present-day residents, but also catalyzes economic revitalization, tourism, sustainable development. And whereas it is incumbent upon us to cherish, protect, and steward our cultural heritage with the utmost care and respect, ensuring that these treasures endure the generations to come. Therefore, I beckon, Mayor, proclaim May 2024 as Historic Preservation Month. I urge all citizens to join in recognizing the significance of our historic places and engage in activities promoting their preservation and appreciation. And I believe, adopted this 28th day of May 2024. And I believe that Daniel Shu is here tonight, and... Looking to see who else you have with you.
Yes, I accidentally put I2 on...
Oh, I see. Got you. That's okay. I'll tell you what, before we present it, I will give you time to come up and speak, if you would like to do that. Or we can do it opposite. I see that there's several of you here to do that.
Yeah, we can just do it before, if that's okay.
Okay.
Well, Madam Mayor, members of council, and for those of you back behind who do not know my, know me, my name is Daniel Shu, and I serve as the Chairman of the Bristol, Virginia Historic Preservation Award Committee. I'm also the Old House Agent. Last Thursday was our 11th Annual Historic Preservation Awards Ceremony. We were thrilled this year to combine our awards program with the Bristol, Tennessee Historic Preservation Award Committee. May, as you said, is National Historic Preservation Month. It was designated in 1973 by the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Bristol, Virginia's Historic Preservation Award Committee was a dream of past Community and Economic Development Director Andrew Trivet, who formed our initial committee in 2013. Bristol, Tennessee developed their committee in 2018. The mission of our committees jointly is to encourage excellence in preservation and thereby inspire even more preservation of our beloved old buildings by recognizing and honoring property owners and/or developers who engage in high-quality preservation projects in one or more of our numerous historic districts. The property owners we recognized have invested their time, physical labor, and monetary resources in their properties as a labor of love. No matter how large or small the project, any investment in preserving an old building is a huge investment in our community that will benefit our citizens for years to come. These efforts play a role in developing safer and more vibrant neighborhoods while preserving the rich history, culture, and character and landscape of our cities. In my career, I am a real estate agent that specializes in the sale of old homes. I believe in putting your money where your mouth is. If you want to see the end of demolished historic structures and the renewal and reuse of our old buildings, you must take action. Some people work to preserve history by documenting it, and I commend those folks. But I have made it my career to save it. I want to personally thank the council, for the city council and staff, for all the times you have worked with me in an effort to preserve and save our history. Thank you for encouraging the right growth in our city and working with property owners to repair dilapidated structures that were used and abused by slum lords. My wife and I have restored and live at 258 King Street. Built in 1814, it is the oldest house in Bristol, Virginia. We have also restored Pleasant Hill, an 1872 house, and the former home of noted historian Bud Phillips. We have repaired or been somehow involved with over 30 restoration slash renovation projects in Bristol, Virginia alone. I say this not to brag or bring attention to my family, but to bring attention to preservation and show people what can be done if you'll just start the project. There's still much work to be done, but I believe there is light at the end of this tunnel. It is bright. The winner of the Commercial District Award, Bonnie Flinner, said, "We are all working hard, and one day, there will be no buildings left in Bristol to need repair." As an investor, history lover, and real estate agent, I can say that day is very close. I'll end tonight the way I ended Thursday night at the Preservation Award. Benjamin Franklin said, "You can learn a lot about a community by looking at the condition of its cemeteries." I think this analysis crosses over into how we treat the properties in which our deceased built. When we respect historic buildings, we make a conscious, intelligent decision to remember our past and save its tangible evidence for future generations. We preserve physical spaces that represent important times in our history, and the, and the contributions of those that came before us will remain in place with integrity and pride. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And then we also have Catherine Brillhart. And Catherine, if you will state your name and address, and you know, you know the drill, three minutes, and you'll get the warning lights.
Thank you. Mayor Nave, Vice Mayor Holmes, and members of city council. My name is Catherine Brillhart. I live at 213 Autumn Drive in Bristol, Virginia. And I serve as the Vice Chair on the Historic Preservation Award Committee for the City of Bristol, Virginia. And I do want to thank the city. I know that Daniel has mentioned most of the information that I was going to share on the history of our committee, and I appreciate that. But I wanted to thank the city for working with our committee for the past 11 years, and it was really exciting to join with the City of Bristol, Tennessee this year in having a joint awards ceremony. It's important that the city acknowledges and supports the preservation of our rich resources, our historic buildings, because they are the landscape of our city and so important in preserving our rich history and culture. And I want to mention, we do have five historic districts in the City of Bristol, Virginia. We have the Euclid Avenue Historic District, Solar Hill, Virginia Hill, Bristol Downtown Commercial, and the Bristol Warehouse Districts. We also have, as of late, been giving a citywide award to properties that do not exist in the historic districts, but they are in the city limits, so we also acknowledge those buildings. And we also have special recognition, a stewardship award, for property owners that have maintained properties for a long-term maintenance and restoration, as well as individuals who have done a lot of restoration in our city, and we appreciate all of that. So thank you again for all of your support over the past 11 years, and I look forward to working with you again.
Thank you, Catherine. And next, we have Tom Mitteray.
Thank you, council. My name is Tom Mitteray. I live at 19484 Haskell Station Road in Bristol, Virginia. My wife, Vicki, and I rehabilitated the I.C. Fowler home a block over on Spencer Street. And I want to thank those who came before us, that inspired us to rehabilitate that home. And I'd also like to thank your building inspectors who worked with us to keep the historic aspects of the home and, and, and at the same time, keeping it safe for people to inhabit and to visit. So I thank you for that. One of the greatest joys that we, that I had and Vicki had of rehabilitating that house was really the people that we met, people that we had never known before, that had shared an interest in history and those that didn't. And one of the most special people was the great-granddaughter of I.C. Fowler, who built the house, who we were able to have at the grand opening. And that joy of meeting those people and uncovering the history really brought Vicki and I closer to this community. And our love for the community grew because of our, what we, what we were able to accomplish and the people that we met. And history, and uncovering history is fun, but it's so much fun, more fun doing it in community, doing it with other people. I would just like to take remaining time that I have just to encourage you, whatever you could do, to help support the Bristol Historical Association, to find a building downtown somewhere where we could put our archive and really build that up so that it would be, again, a community asset. And I can envision walking tours, driving tours with apps on your phone, pictures you can download, all kinds of things we could do with these homes that are scattered around that would really enhance the city. And again, if it can bring me and my wife closer together with the city, it can happen with people that are here now and for those that come and visit us for different events. So I want to thank the city for helping us to rehabilitate and giving me this opportunity to speak.
Right, thank you. Next, we have Clyde Long.
My name is Clyde Long. I live at 146 Solar Street, Bristol, Virginia. And I have a prepared statement here I'd like to read to city council on the importance of historic preservation. We would like to thank council for proclaiming May has Historic Preservation Month and thereby recognizing how important historic preservation is to our present cultural, social, and economic vitality. History is told through the buildings in a city. Historic buildings are the soul of the community. They are what give the community a sense of place, continuity, identity, and belonging. They help us maintain the stories of who we are and the way we were. It is through historic preservation that we can share those stories of the past with future generations, giving them a foundation to learn from and build upon. Historic structures capture long-term character of a city. They say this is an area that is successful, has been around, weathered storms, and continues to survive. That longevity gives people comfort, and such historic areas give people a sense of familiarity, even if they have never been there before. But preserving history by saving historic structures isn't just good for the soul, it makes economic sense. The numbers involved around money in the form of jobs, property values, household income, environmental and social impact, tax base, tourist dollars, and downtown revitalization, to name a few. Rehabilitation of older buildings produces higher-paying jobs than building in new construction, and the money tends to stay in the local economy. Heritage tourism studies show that people visiting historic sites tend to stay longer and spend two and a half times more money compared to other visitors. And according to the World Bank report, historic preservation projects enhance urban livability, attracting new talent and investment, and provide a healthy environment for job creation. Historic preservation is important to the environment as well. Up to 35% of everything that goes into a landfill is construction waste, much of which comes from demolishing buildings. Historic preservation results in reduced carbon emissions and enhanced resource conservation. Historic structures, the homes and buildings of those who struggle to build a community that we enjoy today are a tangible connection to those individuals in our past. If the vintage quality of historic neighborhoods or downtowns are lost, they are impossible to rebuild. In closing, I leave you with the words of Jacqueline Kennedy Onassis from her letter in support of saving New York's Grand Central Station when its existence was threatened by a proposed skyscraper. Is it not cruel to let our city die by degrees? Stripped of all her proud monuments until there would be nothing left of her, history and beauty to inspire our children? If they are not inspired by the past of our city, where will we find the strength to fight for her future? You know, our city is beautiful. It's beautiful because of the historic buildings. It's a destination place, and I love going downtown, just seeing the beautiful buildings. And without the beautiful downtown preserved as it is, we would, we would really be just a passing thought as people pass 81 either way. They, they wouldn't really be, you know, encouraged to stop. So anyway, thank you for listening, and I appreciate your concerns about historic preservation.
All right. Thank you. All right, we are looking for a council motion and second?
I move for approval of the proclamation as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by Councilman Farnham. Council discussion.
I just wanted to throw out there real quick, just a thank you to everyone who's here tonight, specifically Daniel. We've worked on some, we've had some real estate interactions in the past. He's a real estate agent, and I am too. And Daniel, you know, I've been involved with a few projects, and I've seen firsthand how easy it can be to just basically throw out the old and bring in something new. The work that, that you have done, and if you don't follow Daniel on, on Facebook yet, you need to, because he's got some cool stuff going on, the amount of time it takes, then the energy it takes to restore and preserve the, the old, the historic preservation of it, what you guys do is really great. So just to everyone here who has spoken, the Shues, Catherine, the Longs, the Mitterays, thank you all for, for what you do. I used to think, well, someone's fixing up one house, is that really going to be a, a big difference? But all of a sudden, you get people doing this house, and that house, and that house, and in a few years, we start to see entire neighborhoods really transform. So we need more of people like you, so we appreciate everything you're doing in Bristol, Virginia.
All right. And I'll just add to that, we certainly appreciate you all coming tonight. I enjoyed being at your awards ceremony the other night and hearing the stories and hearing from the families who've invested and really worked on these historic sites to keep them beautiful. And so thank you each and every one of you all for your work and what you're doing. It is very important to keep our community vibrant, and it builds so much character for Bristol, and I love to ride down some of the streets and look at, look at the homes. And you mentioned the downtown. The downtown is certainly gorgeous as well. So thank you each and every one. So at this time, Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
At this time, we'll present the proclamation to whoever's going to be in the picture. May come forward, if it's all of you all or one or who.
Yeah, we'll just, she's got, yeah.
Congratulations. Congratulations. She ran a race today, so she's tired.
Yep.
Thank you. So, no, it's fine. Hey, good talking to you. Thank you all. Congratulations. All right. Next on the agenda is approval of Home Trust parking lot lease. Staff report, Randy.
Counsel, tonight you have before you a new lease with Home Trust Bank. Home Trust Bank has requested to sign a new lease for 20 parking spaces in the WCYB parking lot. There's an overhead view of the parking spaces. Home Trust Bank wants the lease on the last page of the proposed lease. Home Trust Bank was paying the city $600 a month for 40 spaces. The new proposal will be for $300 a month for 20 spaces.
All right. We're looking for a council motion and second.
I move for approval of the contract for the lease as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by the Vice Mayor. Council discussion.
The only question I have is, I know Home Trust is not currently open. Is there still some signage down there in the parking lot regarding those certain spots?
I don't think there's any specific signage for those spots. It's something that we'll look into to see if Home Trust wants us to do that for them. We can potentially come up with some signage for them.
So this, Home Trust owns the building, and currently the first and third floor are vacant, and the second floor is the workers' compensation board?
I think there's someone on the third floor as well. I think Jordan Pennington has a law office on the third floor, I believe.
Maybe there's some more space, because I saw a sign that there was space for lease on the first and third.
Okay.
But these would not be spaces. Are these spaces for the building in general, or are these spaces for whoever would be theoretically leasing the vacant spaces?
That would be up to Home Trust. My assumption is it's for their tenants of that building.
So theoretically, for the, for the workers' compensation board and for the lawyer that is there?
Right.
Okay.
All right. With no further discussion, Clerk, please call the roll. Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Knave.
Yes.
Next on the agenda, public hearing number two for the year fiscal year, not fiscal year, for the year 2024 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Annual Action Plan. And now, at this time, we will open the public hearing. And we do not have anyone signed up for public comment. And we'll move into the staff report by Ellen.
Bristol is an annual recipient of federal funding through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, better known as HUD. The entitlement monies may be spent to develop or sustain viable urban communities by providing decent housing and a suitable living environment, and by expanding economic opportunities principally for low-to-moderate-income persons. All entitlement monies are dispersed through the city's CDBG program. The city's Program Year 2025 award is $259,069. I'm sorry, $259,696. The city will receive $70,454 in home funds, which are used for housing reconstruction and down payment assistance. This is the second of two required public hearings for the city of Bristol's Program Year 2024 CDBG Annual Action Plan. The first public hearing was held April 9, 2024, at a regularly scheduled city council meeting.
All right. At this time, we will close the public hearing, and we'll move into the next agenda item, which is council approval of performance year 2024 CDBG Annual Action Plan. And we'll look for a staff report from Ellen.
Each year, the city must develop an annual action plan that provides a blueprint to HUD as to how the city will spend its CDBG funding. The annual action plan is developed by the city's Department of Community Development and is based upon identified needs of its low-income residents and communities within the city. All activities must be part of the city's CDBG Consolidated Plan, which is established every five years, outlines the city's goals, and is submitted to HUD. This year's, I'm going to go over the distribution of the allocation in just a moment. Staff has posted two public notices and held a public comment period as required, with drafts of the annual action plan made available to the public. This is to provide the public with the opportunity to participate in the development of needs, review the proposed activities, and review past program performance. The first public hearing was held on April 29, 2024, and the second public hearing is being held tonight. At the April 29 regularly scheduled council meeting, the mayor's subcommittee was formed and directed to review this year's CDBG Annual Action Plan and recommended activities. The subcommittee met on May 8, 2024, with staff to fulfill this direction. The subcommittee approved staff recommendations for the Program Year 2024 CDBG Annual Action Plan and associated activities as presented. And I'm just going to review staff recommendations as approved by the subcommittee. Thank you, Councilmen Osborne and Farnham, for participating. So the annual action plan was drafted and original recommendations made by staff. It was reviewed and approved by the council subcommittee. Total awarded by HUD is $259,696. Total home award is $70,454.59. So taking that, we can use 20% for administration. We usually take 100% of that, so that comes to $51,939. That pays for a portion of the administrator's salary, travel supplies, public notices, et cetera. $170,807 was allocated for city projects activities. This includes new sidewalks, demolition, emergency home repair, code enforcement activities, economic development, and other public improvement projects to come up. Public service projects, we can allocate up to 50%, 15%, and this year we awarded $36,950. These go to agencies such as Crossroads Medical Mission, Children's Advocacy Center, and the Appalachian Independence Center. And I'm going to detail that breakdown for you in just a minute. We have an estimated carryover from this last year of about $65,000. So here's the breakdown for the public service. We had public service activities. We had somewhat fewer applications this year, but still, all of these organizations provide such wonderful services for the city. Staff looks for certain things when they are going over these applications, mostly to be, to establish that it's a good fit for the CDBG program. And once again, I did this last year. I jumped ahead. This is not public services. This is how we allocated the regular city projects. So sidewalk improvements, we allocated $52,000. Emergency housing repair, $50,000. We have a little bit of carryover left there. Demolition is $20,000. We have a little bit of carryover there as well. Economic development will total $8,000. That's allocating $3,000 of new money, and we have about $5,000 carryover. Code enforcement is $29,807. Girls Inc. security cameras is $5,000. And Bristol Transit, we already have CDBG monies allocated to that, $35,000, but in order to actually complete the project, it's going to take another $11,000. And this is not for the entire project. This is to provide a match for a grant that's already received for that project. Administration, $51,939. And again, public services, $36,950. So here are our public service applications. So we had Bristol Speech and Hearing. They have a new program, sequential oral sensory feeding therapy, and they asked for some monies for that. Basically, we allocated them the balance of what we had left of $900. Crossroads Medical Mission, as you'll see through this, we've, to our well-functioning organizations, we kind of have tried to give them level funding. So Crossroads Medical Mission, we've allocated $7,500. Bristol Speech and Hearing, they did put in two applications. They were awarded $6,950 for odd-based software. Highlands Community Services, who manages Children's Advocacy Center, we've allocated $7,600 for them. Jones Creativity Center at the Bristol Public Library, we've allocated $10,000 to them. United Way did not get funded this year. And then Appalachian Independence Center, we awarded them $4,000. So that all totals $36,950. So our home funds allocation, this dropped about $10,000 this year, but at $70,454.59, it will be used for down payment assistance, major rehab, and reconstruction activities. And these are administered through the First Tennessee Development District on behalf of the Northeast Tennessee-Virginia Home Consortium. I went through that really quickly, but are there any questions?
You had.
Go ahead.
Sorry. You had code enforcement on there. How is that planned to be used? We have a lot of code enforcement needs. I was wondering what was in mind.
We do. Basically, we have a certified code enforcement area as recommended by HUD, and this, what we allocate to that, to code enforcement pays approximately 50% of the salary of our residential maintenance inspector.
What was the previous year funding for the Jones Center? You said that you generally had level funding.
Yeah, last year we gave them $12,000, I believe.
Well, no questions, but just a comment. I know for, it seems like for a few years, we've talked about a waiting list when it comes to emergency home repairs. So I think that's great that we've been funding that for several years, and we've sort of been getting through that waiting list. And that waiting list, I think, is lower than it has been in the past.
It absolutely is. Yes, we put more money toward the emergency home repair, and we're getting through our waiting list a lot quicker than we would have.
Again, no question, but I'll say, you know, those, those kind of projects, helping people with home repairs, is, money-wise, a very minor part of the overall money that the city spends, but impact-wise, it's incredibly important. You know, I think that that small amount of money compared to $100 million budget goes an incredible way to really help people when they really need it the most. So, so thank you for that. And as far as, as far as the other stuff that was funded, you know, I would recommend to every other member of council, if they've not served on this subcommittee, to do that because you, obviously, you're making very hard decisions for a whole lot of very worthy organizations. I wish we could fund every single one of them. Just anytime they ask for money, I wish we could give them all the money they want. But, you know, we have a finite amount to double out. So I am glad, you know, that we were able to fund what we could. I'm glad that we were able to help who we could, and, you know, they'll do a lot of good work in our community and our region.
All right. We're looking for a council motion and second.
I move to approve the PY 2024 CDBG Annual Action Plan as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by Councilman Farnham. Council discussion.
I'll just add in. Ellen, thank you for your presentation on this, and to our council members who served this year. And I agree with what Councilman Osborne was saying, that, you know, we kind of rotated each year, so I know I was on it last year. And it is eye-opening and really difficult to go through and make those decisions because they're all very good projects to help out organizations in the city. So thank you all who served on that this year. We appreciate that. And thank you for your time that you've put in to put this presentation together.
All right. With no more discussion, Clerk, please call the roll. Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Knave.
Yes.
All right. Next on the agenda is supplemental appropriation of $631,921. Staff report as Tamara.
Thank you, Mayor and the members of council. This agenda item is supplemental appropriation in the amount of $631,921. To appropriate police department labor support funds received for police overtime, $1,130. To appropriate fire departments received for sale of equipment, $3,000. For maintenance of municipal buildings, to appropriate insurance proceeds received for demolition related to the structure fires, $38,400. And for Highlands Community Policy and Management Teams, to appropriate estimated state revenues from a labor of fiscal years in the amount of $586,391. Your staff does recommend that council approve the supplemental appropriation as reported.
All right. We're looking for a council motion and second.
I move for approval of the supplemental appropriation as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by Councilman Pollard. Council discussion.
All right. No discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Knave.
Yes.
Okay. Moving into the next item on the agenda, item F1, ordinances, second reading. Second reading of the ordinance to repeal Chapter 86, Article X of the City Code. No one is, I'm sorry. That one or this one?
No, we're right. E1.
Yeah, mark it out.
What did we do?
We postponed E1 to June 11.
Ah.
I'm reading F1.
We should have postponed.
Never mind.
Never mind.
Okay. I thought I was right. I marked it. Okay, yes. Okay, thank you. Article X of the City Code. No one has signed up for public comment. Staff report, Randy.
Counsel, this is the second reading of an ordinance to repeal Chapter 86, Article 10 of the City Code. This is a duplicate of the inoperable vehicles code section that we found as we were trying to enforce some inoperable vehicle code sections in our code. And we just ask that we repeal this section and go forward with the current code section that we have that was in the 2005 ordinance update.
Okay, thank you. We're looking for a council motion and second for the second reading, full or by caption.
I move the second reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by the Vice Mayor and a second by Councilman Osborne. Council discussion.
I'll just jump in real quick. I appreciate staff working on this. I know I've noticed a few vehicles on the side of the road throughout the city, and having this process streamlined and correct, not conflicting, would be a good step towards cleaning a few things up, so thank you.
All right. Clerk, please call the roll. Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Knave.
Yes.
Reading of ordinance.
Ordinance 24 hyphen 8, an ordinance to repeal Chapter 86, Article 10, inoperable vehicles.
All right. We're looking for a council motion and second for adoption.
I move for adoption of the ordinance as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by the Vice Mayor. Clerk, please call the roll. Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Knave.
Yes.
All right. Number two, an ordinance to repeal City Code Chapter 50, Article 4 in its entirety, and reenact a new City Code Chapter 50, Article 4 pertaining to the State of Virginia Erosion and Stormwater Management Program, VESMP Regulation. We have no one signed up for public comment. Staff report, Jake.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city adopted the current Erosion Sediment Control and Stormwater Management Regulations found in the City Code, Chapter 50, Article 4, pertaining to the State of Virginia Erosion and Stormwater Management Program, VESMP Regulation.
We have no one signed up for public comment. Staff report, Jake.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city adopted the current Erosion Sediment Control and Stormwater Management Regulations found in the City Code, Chapter 50, Article 4, pertaining to the State of Virginia Erosion and Stormwater Management Program, VESMP Regulation.
We have no one signed up for public comment. Staff report, Jake.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city adopted the current Erosion Sediment Control and Stormwater Management Regulations found in the City Code, Chapter 50, Article 4, pertaining to the State of Virginia Erosion and Stormwater Management Program, VESMP Regulation. We have no one signed up for public comment. Staff report, Jake.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city adopted the current Erosion Sediment Control and Stormwater Management Regulations found in the City Code, Chapter 50, Article 4, pertaining to the State of Virginia Erosion The city adopted the current Erosion-Sediment Control and Stormwater Management Regulations found in the City Code Chapter 50, Article 4 in 2014. The State of Virginia at a 2023 State Water Control Board meeting approved and adopted the Virginia Erosion and Stormwater Management Regulation, and approved the repeal of the Erosion-Sediment Control Regulations, the Erosion-Sediment Control and Stormwater Management Certification Regulations, and the Virginia Stormwater Management Program Regulation. The new regulation and the repeal of the other regulations will become effective July 1, 2024. And as such, the city must also repeal the current regulations and adopt the new requirements. The first reading of this ordinance was at the regularly scheduled city council meeting on May 14, 2024.
All right, we're looking for a council motion and second for the second reading, full or by caption?
So moved by caption only. Second.
All right. The second reading is moved by Councilman Pollard and a second by the Vice Mayor, by caption only. Council discussion. All right, clerk, please call the roll. Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nade.
Yes.
Reading of ordinance.
Ordinance 24 hyphen, ordinance 24 hyphen six, an ordinance to repeal and reenact Chapter 50, Article 4, Stormwater Management and Erosion and Sediment Control.
All right, we're looking for a council motion and second for adoption.
I move the, I move the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by the Vice Mayor and a second by Councilman Osborne. Clerk, please call the roll. Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nade.
Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda, an ordinance to amend City Code Appendix to Chapter 70, Paragraph 1 hyphen A pertaining to solid waste fees. No one has signed up for public comment. Staff report, Randy.
Uh, Council, the purpose of this ordinance is to decrease the monthly residential collection fee from $48 to $38 per month with the effective date of July 1 of 2024. Pursuant to Virginia Code 58.1 hyphen 3007, notice was properly given of a public hearing on the proposed tax rates and solid waste fees for the 2024-2025 fiscal year. The notice of public hearing was published in the Bristol-Harrah Coolier on Saturday, April 13th, 2024. And citizens were given an opportunity to appear before the local governing body at the April 23rd, 2024 regularly scheduled city council meeting. The first reading of the ordinance passed at the May 14th meeting.
All right, we are looking for a council motion and second for the second reading, full or by caption?
I move the second reading of the ordinance by caption only. Second.
All right, we have a motion by the Vice Mayor and a second by Councilman Pollard. Council, council discussion.
I'm glad to see it.
Yep.
This is good. And we need to find a way to reduce it further. But that's going to take work, just like this did.
Yeah, yeah, I'm really happy we were able to lower it by $10, hopefully. I think it's a great move for our residents. It's what we've heard from them all year since we had to raise it. And so again, it's not where we want it to be just yet, but at least $10 is going to save a lot for households. It means a lot. So with no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll. Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nade.
Yes.
Reading of ordinance.
Ordinance 24 hyphen five, an ordinance to amend City Code Appendix to Chapter 70, Paragraph 1A pertaining to solid waste fees.
We're looking for a council motion and second for adoption.
I move for adoption of the ordinance as presented.
Second.
All right, we have got a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by the Vice Mayor. Clerk, please call the roll. Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nade.
Yes.
All right, next on the agenda, an ordinance to amend City Code Chapter 78, Article 6, Section 78 dash 172, pertaining to transit, room rental, tax, levy, and amount. No one has signed up for public comment. Staff report, Randy.
Uh, Council, the purpose of this ordinance is to increase the transient room rental tax from 13% to 15% effective July 1, 2024. This additional funding is necessary to provide operational and capital resources for general government services, including but not limited to public safety, education, health, and welfare, streets, and parks, and recreation. Pursuant to Code of Virginia 58.13007, notice was properly given of a public hearing on the proposed tax rates and solid waste fees for the 2024-2025 fiscal year. The notice of public hearing was published in the Bristol-Harrah Coolier on Saturday, April 13th, 2024. And citizens were given an opportunity to appear before the local governing body at the April 23rd, 2024 regularly scheduled city council meeting. The first reading of the ordinance passed at the May 14th, 2024 meeting.
All right, we're looking for a council motion and second for the second reading, full or by caption?
I move for a second reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
All right, we got a, a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by the Vice Mayor. Council discussion.
As much as I don't like raising taxes, at least this taxes on people who don't live here, people who are in a very difficult financial place right now. We've got to pay for things somehow. At least this is less pain on our residents.
All right, clerk, please call the roll. Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nade.
Yes.
Reading of ordinance.
Ordinance 24 hyphen three, an ordinance to amend City Code Chapter 78, Article 6, Section 78 hyphen 172 pertaining to transient room rental tax levy and amount.
All right, we are looking for a council motion and second for adoption.
Uh, I move for adoption of the ordinance as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by Councilman Pollard. Clerk, please call the roll. Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nade.
Yes.
Next on the agenda, budget ordinance for year 2024-2025. No one has signed up for public comment. Staff report, Randy.
Uh, Council, pursuant to Section 10.03 of the City Code of Bristol, Virginia, on April 9th, 2024, the city manager submitted his annual budget estimate for fiscal year 2024-2025, including a bound document detailing the proposed budget ordinance and other required information. The budget ordinance requires two readings. The first reading was May 14th, 2024, and was passed 3-2. The previous relevant action was pursuant to Section 10.04 of the City Code of Bristol, Virginia. City Council held a public hearing on the budget appropriation ordinance on April 23rd, 2024. The notice for the public hearing for the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget appropriation ordinance was published in the Bristol-Harrah Coolier on Saturday, April 13th, 2024.
All right, we are looking. Oh, sorry. We are looking for a council motion and second for the second reading, full or by caption?
Uh, so I'll go ahead and I'll make a motion, and we talked about this a little bit last time. I'll move for a second reading by caption only for this budget as presented, with staff being directed to not expend the funds for police vehicles or the fire station alerting system in order to compensate for the meals tax that's not being increased, and, and also for a budget amendment to be added to the July 9th agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion with some changes. And a second by the Vice Mayor. Do I need to read all of those again? Do we have those? Okay. Council discussion.
Well, I just wanted to jump in real quick and say it's, it's budget time, you know, we always go back and forth a bit. No budget is perfect. It's always a, a tough time trying to project out for another year. But overall, I like the budget. Just some main points, you know, this year, we are not raising the real estate tax. We are lowering the trash rate. We are not raising the meals tax. We're hiring some more police officers, and city employees are getting a raise. So overall, I like it. You know, there's a lot of good, maybe some bad, but overall, I think it's been a tough few years. I think a few years ago, we talked about the landfill and the overall cost of the landfill fixes. And we thought this is going to be a tough, a couple of tough budget years that we're going to be getting through. And I think we're going through those, and I'm, I'm optimistic. And again, I think things are looking up and brighter days are ahead.
I, I would just like to echo this sentiment in some part. I, I agree that this budget isn't, isn't everything we would like to do. We're definitely in tough financial times. I would say that this, this, this budget is, no offense to staff that prepared it, is far from perfect considering what we're working with. I do think our staff has done a phenomenal job getting us as close as they can with what we're working with. I know there are several things in this budget that, or several things I would like in this budget, including additional firefighter to balance out the shifts. We are uneven, that causes strain on our firefighters. With, with what we had to do with foregoing police vehicles and fire station alerting system currently, I'd like to see that back in there at some point very soon, hopefully, with some other possibilities. So it's not perfect. It's not, not everything that, as a city council, we really should, let me rephrase that. It's not, not everything that we would like to do as a city for our citizens, for our staff, even though there is the staff raise, which is great. I, I do think, though, as, as a council, we have to be responsible coming into budget season. We have to understand that one of our bigger duties is to provide a budget, to provide funding, to provide services to the city. If, if we don't pass this budget tonight, we don't do that. We fail in our job, we fail in our responsibilities. So I understand that there, there's some heartburn over some specific things. A lot of those specific things cost additional money, cost additional taxes, costs additional burden on our, our citizens who are already burdened as it is. So while, while I would like to see a host of things added or changed or possibilities down the line, I think this is pretty good for where, where we're working from right now. So thank you to staff, I didn't mean to disparage your work.
So I find myself in a conflicted position. I've voted for five consecutive budgets that have been balanced and have funded city services. And I think, hopefully, made progress over the past several years. This is the first budget that we're presented with, that I'm presented with to vote on, that, that is not structurally balanced. And I feel like that is one of our duties as a local governing body to produce a balanced budget. And you know, yes, we will, we'll be pulling money from beginning balance, we'll be finding ways to make up the money. But, but at the end of the day, we're, we're pulling from beginning balance. So it's not a structurally balanced budget. There's a lot of good stuff in this budget. There are raises for city employees, you know, we're funding our police and firefighters like we should be. And we hadn't been doing that several years ago. So we're, we're doing a lot of good stuff with this budget, funding education, funding the school system. But, but at the end of the day, it is, it is not structurally balanced. We're essentially one and a half million dollars out of whack. And that has to be made up for somewhere. And, and that gives me pause. You know, we don't have, you know, yes, maybe we'll have more revenue next year, once the casino comes online, but we don't know how much. We can't guarantee that that money is going to show up and when it's going to show up, and where, or what amount. So it, it gives me pause, it gives me cause for concern. I, I know that we have, we have a fiduciary responsibility to pass a budget and to do it in the most responsible way for our citizens. And I just, I don't know that passing a structurally unbalanced budget is the way to do that. So those are my concerns.
My primary concern, and there are a couple of minor details that I think we could take some time to figure out. But my main concern on the budget as a whole is that, in my opinion, we need a, a separate city attorney. I mentioned that, I've, I've mentioned that ever since I've been on the council, maybe even before I was on the council. The current dual role of city manager and city attorney was supposed to be short-term and temporary. But he's been doing both jobs for seven years now. And every year for seven years, there's been a, a fiscal reason to decide to keep them combined. And I think it's important enough, we need to find some way to make it happen. I think that the jobs are important enough that they need the focus of separate people.
Well, I'll just add in, I don't disagree with you about the city attorney. However, with our finances, the way they look, it's been hard to put an amount in there to have that separate position. I, I don't even think our city attorney disagrees with having another person in that position. But at this point, it's worked. He's been doing a great job in both roles. If we had a larger budget to work with, I think it wouldn't be a question for him or for us, for anyone. I think it is working, I think it's important to stress, you know, the type of work that you're getting done, it really saves us money for you being our city attorney as well. And then other things, we outsource that to other law offices, if it's a bigger issue, such as the landfill or other things like that. We've been able to outsource that and pay as we go. So I appreciate the work you've been doing. I know that you probably wouldn't mind as well, because you're not paid that much to be the city attorney as well as be the city manager. I think you would be happy for that to be separated. But I feel like, as we've talked about, the way our budget currently looks, it would be tough for us to add a whole nother position for that amount. When we're talking about, you know, we discussed, we'd like to add one firefighter to add out, to balance our shifts. And we can't add a firefighter, so I don't know how we could justify also adding another city attorney at this time. I do think there's some great things about this budget. We've listened to you, to our citizens, and everyone I've talked to, the biggest thing for us has been, please help lower that trash rate, if at all possible. So I'm very proud and thanks to our staff, who honestly have worked really hard on giving us options on how we can get that trash rate lowered. And so we appreciate the hard work that you have provided, that put into this, but also the options we've had to look at how we could get to that. And then also, we've heard from so many of downtown and other areas that really think that we, we need more police presence, especially in our downtown area. So adding additional officers to focus on our downtown is extremely important. That was one of my priorities also in, in my budget. And so I'm really happy that we are able to leave and have those in the budget. And then that we were not, we didn't have to raise the meals tax. You know, I know that we're going to have to hold off on a few things, such as the police vehicles and some fire equipment, in order to keep these other things in here and not raise the meals tax. But I will throw in, we do have some grant applications out there that could pay for those police vehicles that we will hear about pretty soon, our early fall. So I'm, I'm very positive in thinking that that money's going to come through, and we're going to still be able to have these other things that we're having to look at eliminating right now in order to balance the budget. And I think also by eliminating those, we wouldn't have to pull from that, from our beginning fund, from our general fund. Is that correct? If we take out some other things, how would that, how does that work?
For the $750 offset, yes, if we get grant funded, then it would not be an additional pull from beginning balance.
Okay. And so while we don't know, I mean, there are some ifs and buts, but I feel good about the applications we have in. And I know it's hard to just say if we get those, and we, but we have to wait. But I feel very confident and optimistic that we're going to get those grants. And those are some federal grants, applications that we have in to pay for those things. And if we don't, then we can look later and see how we can figure out other ways then to pay for that additional equipment, that, and police vehicles, and that additional firefighter and other things that we're wanting to add in this time. I will say, I feel like in this budget, the Fire Department has come out pretty good in getting a new truck and equipment. So I think that they're still coming out very well in this budget, so not a, we haven't eliminated things from, from those. Even though we have eliminated a few things in those, they are still coming out pretty good. So thank you again. And I feel like this is a budget that we could move forward with and pass tonight. I hope that we do. Because I feel like, as we move forward and look at these things that we're having to hold off on right now, we're not saying no. We know the importance. We know the importance of them, but just saying, let's wait a little bit on the things that we'll have to take out. So the positive things again is especially getting that trash rate down. I think that that is huge, and that's what we've heard the most of. If I've got phone calls or emails, it's been about the trash rate. So thank you for working hard on getting that down. So with no further discussion, Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
No.
Pollard?
No.
May?
Yes.
Reading of ordinance.
Ordinance twenty-four hyphen seven, budget ordinance for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Making General Fund, Community Development Block Grant Fund, Local Funded Capital Projects Fund, State and Federal Funded Capital Projects Fund, Commonwealth Attorney Federal Revenue Sharing Fund, Transit Enterprise Fund, Flexible Spending Fund, Asset Forfeiture Fund, School Operating Fund, School Textbook Fund, School Food Service Fund, School Local Capital Projects Fund, School Construction Fund, and School Activity Fund appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, in the following amounts: General Fund, eighty-seven million, five hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars; Community Development Block Grant Fund, three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars; Local Funded Capital Projects Fund, one million, two hundred nine thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars; State and Federal Funded Capital Projects Fund, nine million, two hundred sixty-one thousand, eighty-six dollars; Commonwealth Attorney Federal Revenue Sharing Fund, one hundred and one thousand dollars; Transit Enterprise Fund, nine hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars; Flexible Spending Fund, sixty-two thousand, fifty dollars; Asset Forfeiture Fund, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred dollars; School Operating Fund, forty-nine million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars; School Textbook Fund, one million, fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars; School Food Service Fund, two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars; School Local Capital Projects Fund, seven hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars; School Construction Fund, one million, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars; School Activity Funds, one million, one hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and regulating payments out of the city treasury and also fixing the tax rate on real and personal property for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
All right, we are looking for a council motion and second for adoption.
I'll move for adoption of this budget ordinance.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Farnham and a second by the Vice Mayor. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
No.
Pollard?
No.
May?
Yes.
All right, next to the added item on the agenda, number six, discussion in regards to Believe in Bristol. And I'll just start it off. I know that this council's had some discussion on the funding. We have seventy-five thousand dollars allocated in the budget for Believe in Bristol, and have had a number of discussions about communication as far as our upcoming July fourth event. I think most of us up here were under the understanding that that event would go to, went to Tennessee last year. We came to Cumberland Park this year, and it would go back and forth and alternate this year. There's been some questions about that. I think it's been announced it's going back to Tennessee side, to Anderson Park this year. And I just thought it would be a good opportunity for us to discuss that funding and come up with a better plan for that.
I appreciate this opportunity to discuss this. It was disheartening to see it not follow the schedule that we were told by Believe in Bristol. So I'm hopeful that we can get things on the back, back on the right track. It should alternate. We're two cities working as one. It's good. We have great facilities on both sides. It's great for us to kind of share that and have our folks on both sides to get to enjoy the parks that we have downtown. So I hope that whatever comes from this discussion, we have a good plan to get things back on track where I don't know if it's, if there's enough time to get it back to Cumberland this year, but maybe the next two years, we can alternate that way or something. I think Mr. Osborne might talk about that. So I'm looking forward to getting this fixed going forward.
Well, so for full transparency on this subject, myself and Mr. Holmes were told in twenty twenty-three that Believe in Bristol's plan going forward would be to alternate the location of the Fourth of July events. Last year was at Anderson Park. This year should be at Cumberland Park and vice versa. That was not, that was what was told us. That is not the case with what's happening. So I would, I would be the opinion, as Mr. Holmes alluded to, that going forward, we should have two years at Cumberland Park to make up for two years in Anderson Park, and then I think we should alternate. I think that would be fair for both cities, and I think that we should be treated equally. Believe in Bristol serves our downtown community, which is half Bristol, Virginia, and half Bristol, Tennessee, and I think that we should be treated just as well as Bristol, Tennessee is.
I know that we also were really happy to add the additional funding last year to bring our fireworks back and really wanted the fireworks to come back and was a big funder in that piece. And also, they get, you know, a lot of opportunities for grants from the Virginia side in addition to our funding, you know, for the, from the Virginia Main Street and from the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development for facade grants and other things. So they get funding through a lot of things through Virginia, and we want to work closer with them. I just hope that we can figure out a better plan, and I will say Maggie is out of the country right now, so we will, I had sent her an email a month or so ago, and then she let me know today that she's out of the country. Because we do want to continue this discussion. We want to be a good partner to Believe in Bristol, but we want to make sure that when we're told and we provide the funding we are asked to provide, that we get what we've asked for in return. And I don't think we even asked for that. That was what was provided to us, and I know she told you all that, and she also shared that with me, that it would be in Cumberland Park this year, as well as some of our city staff. So as we move forward, you know, trying to figure out better opportunity on how we can work with them in communications and how we move forward with these community events. The events are great downtown. We certainly want to have those, and they do a good job on the events that they do. So I think this just came about because a lot of our council, majority of us was told it would be back in Cumberland Park. And I will say, I've had a ton of residents, after that announcement came out that it was going to be in Anderson Park again, I had several, more than several residents reach out and say, why isn't it going to be back in Cumberland Square Park? Why, you know, I thought it was going to alternate. So we need to find out, you know, why exactly we can't have it in Cumberland Park and how we can work better together.
I would, I agree. I think that we need to probably talk amongst ourselves and have a timeline where we tell Believe in Bristol, we need an answer. We need a plan by this time. Because we're giving them seventy-five thousand dollars this year, and I would like to make sure that Bristol, Virginia residents are getting the most bang for their buck. I think we need to have, we need to set a deadline. I would say first part of July for us to have an understanding, and I prefer a written agreement with them on this.
The funding is in the budget. We can, as a council, decide to kind of put things on hold with dispersing that until we have that conversation, have that agreement early July.
Okay. So for this particular item, can we then make a motion to amend, to make that amendment?
Counsel, what I, I think what I'm hearing is there may be some trepidation in regards to going forward with the funding for Believe in Bristol as it stands, and I think what I'm hearing is you all would like for staff to maybe hold off on expending any of those funds that are earmarked for Believe in Bristol until we have further discussion with Believe in Bristol. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, I think what our council's saying is we'd like to have an agreement in place so we know moving forward, maybe have that agreement in writing, so we're not surprised if it's moved or whatever. And we're open to have those discussions. It's just it kind of blindsided us.
I think with what I'm hearing from the majority of you, I don't think there necessarily needs to be a motion. Management will recognize that you all do not want us to expend any of those funds until a agreement is in writing with Believe in Bristol.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, with no further discussion on that, we'll move into item number six, matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items, and we have one person signed up. Preston Mitchell, you will come forward. You will have three minutes if you will state your name and address, and you'll have a green light, then a yellow light, and then a red light when your time is up.
Thank you, Mayor Maye, and members of the council. I'm Reverend Preston Mitchell. I serve as the Episcopal Deacon for the Abbotan Convocation, and as such, and part of that is I serve on the Bishop's Commission on Becoming Beloved Community, seeking racial truth and reconciliation. And part of that, I serve as the co-chair with Tina McDaniel, and we also have Reverend Dwayne Mayberry and Reverend Jackie Knopflin here today. Speaking on an issue last year, a little over a year ago, the city council adopted a resolution to support the Community Remembrance Project. It recognized the lynching of Robert Clark in Bristol, Virginia on June the thirteenth, eighteen ninety-one, and also to, and quote, "support the installation of a historical marker to identify the site." The city's resolution supports House Joint Resolution six fifty-five, which was passed in February twenty nineteen by the General Assembly, which the Commonwealth of Virginia apologized for the lynchings in Virginia, and, and I'm quoting from the resolution, "Whereas the Equal Justice Initiative, EJI, created the Community Remembrance Project to create greater awareness and understanding about social terror, lynching, and begin a necessary conversation that advances truth and reconciliation by working with communities to commemorate and record the traumatic era of lynching, by collecting soil from lynching sites across the country and erecting historical markers in these spaces." I'm happy to report that our progress is being made in that a marker is in place with the permission of the citizens' cemetery to place the marker there, and it is in process right now. We hope to have that by September. What we're asking of the council is, we're having trouble with the soil collection. By our own research and primary sources, including a photograph of the lynching, the coalition determined that the most likely place the lynchings occurred is in the area known as Lindsey Grove, and we placed that just below the intersection of Piedmont and Glenway Avenues on what is now property owned by United Company. We've met on two occasions with officials from there, but have been denied access to obtain enough soil to fill a gallon container. While the joint resolution calls for soil from the site, when such permission cannot be obtained, the coalition's been instructed on a meeting we had with Equal Justice Initiative to find an alternative site to collect soil. Given that Robert Clark was taken from the Bristol, Virginia jail located behind the courthouse on Lee Street, we're requesting that the project be allowed to dig a shovel full of soil from that area. There's actually two areas we're asking. Tina's been in contact with Tony Venable, WCYB. That's where the jail was on the side of WCYB. So that's what we're asking, that we have that permission to dig on the courthouse side and have that soil collection in time for the Juneteenth celebration on June fifteenth. I think I'm out of time.
You're fine. You've got anything else? I said you can carry on if you've got anything. Okay.
That's pretty much. So I don't know if there's any questions that you all might have.
Well, I meant to send you all an email on Thursday or Friday, and I apologize. I did not get that email sent, but I have had discussions with council. We have no issue with soil being taken from the jail site. We'd probably need to coordinate with Sheriff Foster as to when that would be a good time to do. I think the only thing the city would ask in return is bring another bucket of soil with you so that we can fill the hole, and someone doesn't break an ankle.
Yeah, we've done that before, right, yeah.
But other than that, I think we're more than happy to support that.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. All right, next on the item, next item is the consent agenda.
I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by the Vice Mayor. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
May?
Yes.
That is all we have, and we stand adjourned.